All right, well, I think in that case, we're ready to start the continuing public hearing for the flexible subdivision of 255 Miriam Street. Is someone going to make a presentation?
No, I'm trying to phrase them along right there.
That's Jay Roy.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is anybody -- we're going to need an easeless.
I think they have one. Just a reminder that we never can.
It's a nice thing to know. So, we've given this hearing about a half an hour, and I assume that we're -- Betsy, when did we receive the material, the revised material?
Probably about a week and a half to it. They're within the week time limits. I did get an email yesterday or this morning from Jane Beatty regarding the ash tree in front. And I'll be really quick about it. I asked, she sent me something from her arborist basically stating that the ash tree and the talpa tree are not in good condition. The ash tree is, appears to be on a portion of town property. I've asked Tom Cullen, who's the tree warden, to go look at it. He's been dealing with a bunch of trees that came down recently. So, he's going to look at it and get back to me. As an emergency measure, he may make the judgment to have it removed.
Well, so it's not property, it's not under our eesies anyway, right?
Well, no, if it's in the town right-of-way, it is under your eesies.
What do you mean because it's scenic growth?
Because it's scenic growth.
Oh, good. But -- We have a separate hearing.
But, but Tom has the ability to --
That's true.
-- danger to the property.
Just say it's been declared an emergency.
And chunks of it have been dropped.
Yeah, okay.
So...
So, he's going to get back to you?
So, he's going to get back to you.
Alan, it might be a non-issue, but we don't think it is in the right way.
Well, it actually would take longer to take it out if it's not in the right.
On the plans that have been prepared, it's shown as kind of within the wall area. So, I've asked him to, A, make the determination of whether it's in the right-of-way or on private property, and then, B, whether it can happen.
Okay.
All right. So, just to sort of start again, we've given this about a half an hour to discuss any changes that you have made as a result of the last hearing session, and if you could hold your presentation to, say, 15 minutes, then that would give us time for planning board comments and then comments from the audience. I suspect that the comments from the audience, given the fact that there's a large tendency of making outweighed planning board comments at this point, but let's see how we do. So, who's making the presentation?
I'll just do a brief introduction, and Jay will give you a little more detail on the changes, especially to Lot B, the rear lot, and Eric Gronigan, the architect who we've been working with, is here. He can address some of that, but although some of his, maybe even -- we'll start off with B, and then I'd like to address, I received Betsy's comment on where, I think, at least where she and maybe the board, whether they want a left or right entrance, and that'll certainly affect some of the presentation tonight. But I'll start off with changes to the rear lot from when we were here before, if that sounds okay. First of all, Jay will go over, we've greatly expanded the limit of work area, primarily in the back. To, we've moved the recharge basin. You remember last time that Ms. Newell said, "How come I don't get as much?"
Are you telling this stuff that Jay would tell us anyway?
I'd like to introduce it.
Okay.
But I know we have limited time. We've moved the septic, per David's suggestion. The building development area, we'll talk about a change in there. We never really hit on, there is a closed buffer area between the two lots, beyond the bottom lot, Lot A, between the house and that buffer area, that we think it does a good job of screening, a rear house from the street. And we've reduced the proposed RGFA from 5,500 to 4,700, which would be 10 percent of the lot. After he talks about those changes, we can come back to what we found on both the houses around this lot, directly abutting and the, I think, I don't know if that chart got sent, Betsy's showing, houses that have been built or totally gutted under the tax assessor standards within the last 30 years to show what the size is of those, better than those neighborhoods. So, with that being said, I'll have Jay walk you through the changes on Lot B since we were last here.
So, on the bottom, I --
These changes are the same whichever way the driveway comes.
Correct, yep. So, what I'll do is I'll just ignore the driveways for now. We'll just talk about Lot B. This lower section is actually one of the plans that we presented at the last hearing. And as Jonathan had mentioned, the footprint has changed. It actually has been reduced in size, so combined a smaller RGFA. It's actually also been lowered and brought to the actual lower point. And you can see, basically, this edge here, this little hatched edge. This is the edge of lawn. So, we had talked about last time, trying to keep the house in the lawn area. You can see in the scenario that basically there's only one tiny little section that's outside the lawn area. The, as Jonathan mentioned, this limit of work has significantly been pulled forward. You can see here, along the backside, on here, as we, the 20, 22-inch conifer back there, that 20-22-inch conifer is shown right there. So, I mean, we brought that forward by approximately 20 feet, 22 feet. So, I mean, so that section has been significantly moved forward. The limit of disturbance, as a whole, for area-wise, has been reduced by about 20, 25 percent. So, it's a significant reduction in the limit of disturbance. We've kept the buffers. So, this way, even though we've reduced our disturbances, what we were providing for planting before, we still keep it. So, we actually haven't reduced the amount of plantings that were proposed. As Jonathan had mentioned also, that we've had this all along, which is basically a little buffer to try to buffer the house from the street for any portions that can't be seen. The septic system itself, originally, as you can see, based on the testing, was right in the tree line. So, it was flanked by two recharge basins. What we did is we actually have it out in the lawn area now. It got a little bit smaller because of the system, the perks were a little bit better out front. So, the system got a little bit smaller, so all the disturbances are in the actual lawn area. This recharge basin is based on, I wanted to put a size there, it's based on all the impervious area that's shown on this site. And now, that basin, as you know, is basically just Legos. We can just take that and push it around and put it anywhere we want. We're putting it, basically, half of it's in the lawn, half it's in the tree line, but it's in a manner that no trees come down to put that system in. But we could also break it up and make it even further into lawn line. But that's something that's only based 100 percent on what the house looks like and what the size is. So, really, for the flexible, it doesn't, it'll never show up on the flexible. And so, other than that, we basically had tried to listen to what the board had, what their comments were, reduce the house, put it on the lower plateau, take the disturbances out of the tree lines, put it into the lawn line, and what we did is we kept this reserve area. Because I know in the past, what we'd like to, what you guys like to do, we felt that it's a good companionship with the actual septic system, is that we put the reserve, separate the reserve area, we put that secondary disturbance line on there. So, areas where the septic is, won't be disturbed. So, we bump out this limit of work and surround it, say it'll only be disturbed if it's ever been built. And the intent is always to go back to the primary area for the septic system. So, even though we show it, because we have to, because per ton of five, we have to have a reserve area, in essence, it never gets built. So, it's another area that's actually never to be disturbed.
And one thing we can use, looking at Betsy's comments, we can use some guidance on, wants us to, would like us to spend more time on the, quote, "design" of that house. And I just, I think we need some guidance there. When you say "design" of that house, do you mean the footprint of that house and pull in the area where the footprint might go? Just looking for some feedback on that.
Are you familiar with the process that we went through at 105 Parkett Road?
No, no.
Three-lot flexible subdivision. It took two years.
I've sat in on the end of some of those.
To work out.
And I'm familiar with the length that I'm talking.
But we generated design guidelines for the lot in the new construction, well, all that buildings on the lot. And I suspect that's something along the lines of what Betsy's talking about. We didn't actually design the houses, but we put guidelines on the houses in terms of ridge height, RGFA, design standards, general design standards.
We'll take a look.
I mean, my understanding, from what I've been hearing, is you've got a slope in the back of the property, and basically, what was originally proposed is a building that was just going to be plunked there. And what I was hearing from the board is that you wanted the building to be designed so it worked more in relationship to the slopes in the back of the lot.
Right. And those are the kinds of things that the design standards have.
Right.
We'll take a look at your decision there. Do you get into style of house?
We get into compatibility with surrounding construction. So, the two parcels are very different in terms of that. But I would imagine that we've been talking about that kind of relationship, so that whatever's built there doesn't look like it landed from outer space. And we put some requirements onto, there's an existing house on that property too. We put some standards, some limits on that, so.
We'll take a look at that, and I think it's fair to say that that's going to, you know, for flexible, that's going to be the standard going forward.
It depends. I mean, in both cases, there were some serious impacts. There were serious impacts here on the neighbors, because everything's so close. In that, in the case of 105, there were impacts. The houses are further apart, but there's a much more open viewscape from the neighbors. So, we had the same level of concern from the neighbors when we were looking at here, I would say roughly equivalent. And in the end, there were reasons why it took as long as it did. It wasn't just that it was a terrible negotiation process. There were hiatuses and...
Yes.
Departures of town employees. But in any case, you know, in the end, it was a resolution that everyone was happy with, that neighbors were happy, I believe.
It hasn't been appealed. Today was the dead.
And they, you know, felt that they didn't have to come to the final sessions of the meetings. And I think the property owners are okay with what we, how it turned out, so.
You've got something everyone can live with.
Yeah. All right, I think that's fair.
But I, we'll take a look at that decision, and that means we'll get Eric a little more involved, you know, at this point. It'll be, it's a pretty eclectic group of houses, as you know. Just going around the two, the two to the left of Hallidah are raised, I don't know if you call them split levels or raised ranches. Then we have two rather traditional colonials in Newell and Haber. And the lawn house, I'm not certain, it's a very attractive house. I'm not certain what style it is. And then we have two out on the street, you know, the two on the street pretty much go with the lot, the house on Lot A. So, we'll see what we can come up with. But they're different. The only other thing I'd add on Lot A, or Lot B, I'm sorry, is as Jay explains to me, that in-ground, the discharge, recharge basin, that is subject to all kinds of movement, depending on where the house goes and what have you, the thought being that, you know, they can break that up. With any luck, we'll be able to relocate it and have, expand somewhat the limit of work area on that side. But, you know, as he explains it to me, he showed it there because the soil conditions, and it has to be down the slope, right? Up here is the only place where he did not get good soil conditions. Otherwise, he would have stuck it up there. But it's subject to a lot of change whenever the actual proposal.
Right. It's all based on the total impervious area on the site, eventually, when it becomes an individual project in the back. And so, as I mentioned, because we have really good soils, we can do, you know, we have really deep groundwater, we can go deep with the systems. So, and these are all basically boxes. I mean, there are boxes of rectangle shape, so you can, they're Legos. You can move them around, and we can easily put those in without taking any of the trees down. Even with the scenario we have now, we're not taking any of the trees down. So, the idea is that you want to have enough depth there from the potential house and from the trees to be able to put it in. So, where the location is, will play when the time comes for an individual site.
You're still splitting the lot almost exactly in half.
Correct.
But you don't have to.
Correct.
So, you can move that lot like that, and give yourself some more flexibility with respect to the buffers that way.
Yes.
Yeah, there's certainly flexibility there. The, so those are the changes from last time, you know, on the rear lot. And that's helpful on what the board means by "design," in terms of that decision. On the front lot, I guess the threshold discussion is board's preference on which side of the driveway comes in. Even, I know Betsy had mentioned, you know, and the Myers had mentioned that this house, whether it be them or a successor, someone along the way is going to want to put a two-car garage in. And I know that was discussed with the historic commission over a year ago now. And, you know, and that can be accomplished with a, I'm told, with the new design on the south entrance, that can be accomplished, the garage can be put almost underneath the patio.
The patio, wasn't it?
So, we can do a garage either side, although in many ways, the natural is probably to put that garage, if the board wants to address the possibility now, and this is what was shown in the historic commission, the board's right like this, right in that rear corner. But I guess the threshold discussion, if you will, is, does the board have a strong preference on, I'll call it a left versus a right driveway entrance here? Eric can tell you, I doesn't think the south will compromise the historical feel to this, and he can address it. But we like the left too, so we're open on that. Eric, let's begin.
So, recently, we got involved in this project and worked on sort of that house location spot with Jay, pulling that stuff forward and into the lawn area, and pulling everything sort of to create the buffer, a greater buffer around, as well as putting the house in that, the lower spot, to keep the scale of the house down and keeping what the house is surrounding, and keeping the ridge height and the mass of this down. Which I know we're going to work into the design parameters of the actual house, and still working to come up with how the, sort of, the placement on the lot, and now how the access goes. We can look at if the property line has effect on that. Got into that. But between the north and the south, we call this the south entrance, and this the north entrance. From what I've, my opinion, when I looked at this, was there's already a lot of driveway space. And I liked the idea of the south side entrance, being able to utilize sort of the same driveway space, as well as the physical context of the existing house, barn and structures, which need access to. So, since we have that already there, if we could extend that, utilize that, rather than introducing an entire new access point on the other side, which all of a sudden, the front lot is kind of covered in driveway space, it could benefit both properties, is how I look at it. It's a fairly traditional concept to utilize that access road to the back barns, and then in this case, this new structure at the back, which could look like a continuation of that. So, that was interesting to me, and as an architect, in an attractive way. It does compromise a couple of trees that go through here, and it has more grading. The north side does have the ability, not as shown here, but it does have the ability to kind of go through this area here. But then, this house sort of becomes locked into all encompassed in driveway space, as well as it's not as, I think we could almost enhance the existing house, the historic nature of it, with an accessway. Not exactly as shown up here, obviously with improvements to it, but...
No, you're talking about getting rid of a portion of the existing driveway.
Correct, correct. Eliminating, this is keeping the circular drive, eliminating this, and then sharing this back here, and creating a kind of a court area, which is where they enter the back, that's the kind of mudroom entrance into the house, and then as well as to the barn area.
And we've already discussed, we don't need that big drive court that you see there.
Correct.
So, that's, that proposal, that would be reduced fairly soon.
So, in essence, this, you know, this kind of driveway here is getting shifted out over. We relocated the shed, which I think, then locating that, how we can kind of create some enhancement of these structures on the site into something that works with the accessway and share that to get to the back lot. That was my interest in that south side location. The north side location, there's quite a few different variations that have happened with that.
I'll put that in.
This is not, this is not, this one sort of cuts in quite a bit to the property line. There's discussion with the neighbor on that side of doing some property line adjustment for that. But I think that's a discussion that would take place. I've been really looking for feedback on the north-south, which also helps me kind of start thinking more about the house exactly, and how, what the architecture and locations on that would be definitely designed.
Could I just add something? Because we've gone back and forth on emails, I talked to her, like, maybe for a total of four or five hours. She has an issue there, because her driveway is right on the property line, and she would like to take some of our land, because when she steps out of her car, there's nowhere to go. And she would like to be able to decorate it, and she would be so happy to do some kind of an easement swap or a land swap with us. She's, repeatedly, we've gone back and forth with emails. The problem would be that that garage would be a non-conforming building. We would have to get CBA approval. And so, this was something that we were coming to you on to get your all's opinion, is that we are fine with the north or the south side. So, please give us some guidance. If you like it on the north side, she's certainly willing to talk to us, and we're willing to talk to her. So, please, you know, give us your views.
The other thing I'd add to that is, Betsy raised the issue with the double entrance in her letter. It's been there for a long time. We think it works very well and helps present this historic house. But if, you know, if the board feels strongly on that, yeah, we can get rid of it. Love to keep it, because we think it works very well, but so we're, in short, we're receptive to the board's input on that.
So, that's where you all are?
Yeah.
That pretty well sums it up. I think a land swap would make a lot not get for it.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to go...
That's the end of that.
No, we'd have to get a variance on it. I don't, I don't...
Well, how would you, how would you prove up density?
I probably wouldn't want to do a land swap, because it just gets more complicated.
My God. And then we're talking about a flexible development for a month or four months.
What I'd probably do is do exchange easements. But if we did exchange easement, you know, the area, the Myers' is property, even if they have exclusive use, it's still subject to the terms of the, you know, of the special permit.
Yeah.
So, it's helpful, we wanted to get your reaction.
Yeah, because...
We're trying to, we're trying to take your suggestion, trying to think outside the box.
Because at the last board meeting, again and again, people said, "Play with the lot lines, think outside the box." You know, I know two of the board members had said, "Talk to your neighbors about alternative driveway scenarios." So, we were trying to follow up on what you had to say and see, and they actually really liked the idea. But, you know, again, if you don't like it, we have, the south side is fine with us.
No matter liking or not liking, if you create a non-conforming lot and then try to make it flexible, that's a real, it's a real challenge.
Well, I wouldn't, that would, I don't think that would be a challenge, if we'd have to get a variance, but for this structure.
The question is whether you can prove up density to the variance, to a lot of the variance.
Well, you wouldn't do it...
President of that.
Well, you wouldn't do it till after the fact.
Yeah.
But, no, if the board thinks that's just opening a can of worms, we'll help, we'll pack off with that.
The other thing, something about the other driveway.
It'd be a comfort level. Literally, their driveway is right on the property line. You can't be closer. So, even little things like pushing the snow, you know, I've had some disputes in town because of the driveway is right beside my neighbor's pushing snow on my property and ruining my shrubs. Just little things like that, it is a hassle.
But it doesn't really eliminate the need for you adding a driveway on your property to get to the property in the rear, or it doesn't, you're moving that driveway to the right or left, has nothing to do with the driveway next door? So, I just don't see what it helps.
For them, it's a control thing. For us, it helps, they seem to have no, as long as they have this, they love, not even counting removing the tree, they love having this here as opposed to any closer. My understanding, I haven't spoken to them directly, is they don't have any problem with this, because this is wooded. But, you know, to help, help with that, get that, you know, so that both parties are happy, they, my folks have no problems, they will give you total control of that.
Yeah, and they'd love to be able to pull their car to the side of the driveway so that they could get by it. It's just very cramped for them there. So, they, the way the lot line was drawn, it was really, it's really tight on them. And so, it just seemed like a win-win, that they could, you know, have more where they need it, and then we could have more where we need it. But, you know, if you don't like it, the south side is fine with us.
How much room would you gain with the fire hydrant there anyway?
Could I do a name for the record, please?
Christopher Seat, 254 Miriam Street.
Christopher...
Seat, S.I.E., Kansas.
First, I don't know where the fire hydrant is.
It's right there on the corner where the driveway, their driveway comes out, right in there.
I think their concern isn't as much the entrance, it's when they get further in.
Yeah, I know, but how kind, what kind of easement should I strike, a curved belt?
That, we're not going to spend a lot of time on that.
We wanted to come to the board first, before we went very far with it.
Positive, yeah. It's positive for... Oh, yeah, there's easements, you can be as creative as you want on easements.
There is one thing about this that we need to, I think, focus on a little bit, and that, you know, if you're talking about the house in the back, but the house in the front, the house in the front, if the house in the front is going to be preserved, then we need to establish parameters for that. If the house in the front is not going to be, if it's going to be subject to demolition, then it's going to be, it's some... then it's going to be, at some, somewhere in the process, it needs to go through the historical commission. And one of the questions I have is, the house, the density determination plan depends on the house in the front being demolished.
Yeah.
So, we, I have a question as to whether we can make a decision on the density determination plan, absent clearing the demolition delay with the historical commission, because of, we're saying that it's okay to demolish the house, but, but we don't have, it's a historic house, it's been declared significant by the commission, so we couldn't, I don't think we could, we could make a decision on the density plan, absent clearing the historical commission's demo delay process. I mean, I'd want some clarification on that, but...
Isn't that always, the density determination plan is theoretical, and we know, once a six month goes by, it can be demolished?
No, in the past, we've had a couple of flexible developments where historical houses had to be demolished to make the density plan work, and we had to go through the demolition delay process, so that we had the authority to sign off on the demolition of the house. So, I just want to be sure that we're on the right page on that one.
Yeah, it may bear exploration, certainly, I think on the brief email I sent Betsy today, they've done incredible amount of work on this house, as you know, but I'm sure, when it was in disrepair, it was, I always noticed the house where a single two-by-four was holding up the porch for years. You know, they spent over three hundred and fifty thousand preserving it, you know, they don't want to take it down. I'm hoping, I always thought a density determination would be an academic exercise, to know that you could do it.
But, my question is, do we have the authority to say, "Okay, the house, we assume the house is going to be demolished," but we, I think, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer. Do we have the authority to be able to say that, absent the historical commission's process?
Because a density determination is not a request to go through a conventional subdivision.
I've got to get into it.
How would we, how would we solve?
I think we need to ask some counsel.
Okay, yeah.
All right. I think we need clarification.
Would, like, voluntary restriction, historic restriction entered now in advance?
It's about the density plan.
Right, but would that eliminate the question?
It might, I don't know, I mean, I think...
Would that be the simplest thing for them to do? I'm just asking. I have no idea.
The Myers', Ted went in front of, as a couple of you know, they went in front of the historic commission over a year ago.
But they withdrew it.
They withdrew it, they didn't want to start any demolition delay period.
So, right now, it's, it's square one with the commission, so, just throwing that out there. Yeah, go ahead.
Dino Toplin, twenty-six, lovely, one oh two Ash Street. I think that, that went right through the old house there, that might be the person that you're working for.
What's the subdivision name?
I don't remember.
Idyllaw.
Idyllaw.
I mean, the flex went around it, but the original...
The density determination? Yeah, I don't remember exactly what the process was on that.
Might just have to look in the folder to see if they went through.
I remember the commission went through that house.
Yeah.
I mean, they shaved the house to see.
I think the commission went through the, actually, no, that, that one's different, because in that case, the house was not declared significant. That's, that's the difference there. Comments from consultants?
My first reaction is, by moving that house from the back right corner to central on the lot, you're opening up the view from the street, and I understand they're putting in that buffer at the property line, but they're also taking down a couple of significant trees on the right half of Marion Street. So, my question is, if you did eliminate that turnaround driveway, would there be more opportunity to give a bigger buffer on that corner, so you wouldn't see the house in there?
Yeah, the Achilles heel in this plant is the driveway. That's, we wind up on, either right on the property line or like five feet off of it, whatever we do, so...
So, your thought is, Kim, is a buffer on the bottom left of the property?
Because my understanding is that there's a large ash tree that you're also asking to remove.
Yeah, yeah. It's got the ash out there, and then the whatever.
And then the catalpa.
Catalpa. Yeah, that same letter, just, they looked at that and split all the way down, unless I had to do our house, you know. It is a trade, you know, or just better buffer out back, because the sense, the neighbors will speak, the sense that people enjoy looking at that house, I guess you'd still be lucky to look at the front house straight on, but you'd lose the view of it coming from, from the north, if you put an aggressive buffer up front. It doesn't sound like the neighbors wanted to preserve that view, so maybe what we're talking is a pretty aggressive buffer in the back of what a, you know, more, maybe more aggressive than was proposed for now.
I'm just trying to talk about the aggressiveness of the buffer, about by losing two pretty significant trees, opening that entire feeling of the street up, and just planting in the back corner. I think that you need to do both, to restore the character.
This goes a little bit to what the, to the presentation where, you know, the staple was made, that putting the driveway on that side brackets a house with driveways. But the proposal is actually to share the driveway up to the barn, in any case. So, my question there would be, if that's going to happen, then come up on the left side, closer to the house, and then, and then, if it's a shared driveway over that distance, come, come to the barn behind the, the front house, as opposed to coming that way, come that way. Do you follow what I'm saying?
No.
If you, if you brought the driveway closer to that, you had to move the septic system.
We're talking the north or the south?
That one. If you brought, forget the septic system, you'd have to relocate the septic system, bring it in, right in there somewhere, and then come across to the garage back there.
But, see, the barn's not used as a garage.
Well, it's, whatever that court was that they had, they drew it...
This is, this is kind of the, this is where they currently park, they don't want to park in the barn, but that's kind of the back. It's more to the kitchen and a mudroom.
Right, why not do that? I mean...
If I could just raise something, because sometimes like the person that's a homeowner, and they live there, and they see things and all, it seems like it's a huge piece of property, and this actually is the biggest piece of property in the Silver Hill neighborhood that doesn't have wetlands and in Hallenhill. But, because there's a barn in the backyard, and because of the topography, it makes the usable backyard really narrow, and then with the trees and everything, and, you know, you really want for kids and for the enjoyment of the people in the future to want to love that house and preserve it, and it was really meant, you know, to have a really nice backyard and to be, you know, of nice hells. And so, that's why I've pushed, and I know sometimes, you know, it's been frustrating, because, you know, the driveway, at one point, they said, "Unless we did a south driveway, they wouldn't accept our plans," and we had to resubmit them, and now they say, "Unless we have a north driveway, people are going to be upset." We are, we are trying. The only real, you know, thing that I have a concern with, though, on the backyard, is to preserve it for, you know, kids, and it really has much less livable space back there than you would think, because of the barn that we're trying to preserve and the topography. And we don't want somebody to take down the barn to give themselves a backyard.
Right now, I don't want either one. So, what's the, what's the answer to that?
It'd be tough, though, running out to look, you're really talking driveways, and I understand you're talking, run this up here, and then run another one down there, you're...
No, I'm talking about running to...
No, see, I thought you were...
You're sharing the driveway up to the, up to the barn anyway.
No, but I thought you were just talking about coming in this side, and it came...
There's a parking area.
And you go straight to there, and then you run another one that way, is that...
It doesn't relate to the barn, it's a parking area that happens on the right-hand side that relates to the barn, because that's where it is, but...
I just want to ask, Kim, do you have an opinion based on what you see tonight, whether you like the driveway on the south side or the north side, or which one you think is better?
I really don't.
They're both...
I do, I don't like it on this side.
This is one of our landscape markets that came up with...
And can I point out something, too? There's something wrong with the drawing. You see how this corner comes down here, and yet there is this stone wall of the house next door? It's out into the street. See this corner? That's not right.
This was the scenario that you saw last time, which is the same north side, same entrance, but it was pulled off.
Like a ten-foot buffer.
It was getting it on the, to the right of that, between the septic and that proposal, there's trees, although they are those Norway maples. I was talking to Jay, they could, we could move, we could move it right over to, kind of on the edge of that, that existing septic, and buy it, what, seven, seven, eight more feet? I don't know what it...
Clarence, there is the possibility that if, if we really were to start looking at this, we could probably save the existing septic system and save those trees.
How wide is that driveway right now?
Twelve feet. So, if I did, if we did twelve feet...
When I go fire an apartment, requires fourteen.
You could still probably do it. It's the, what I do is, I would need, we all have a discussion with Wendy. I could run it along this edge, have a portion of it go over the, over the septic system, which is already vented, and then have it go in between that and the tree line, so none of the trees are done now. And then, basically, it's kind of serving the purpose that you're talking about, but it saves them the money of having to, to put this, you know, push this up.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just saying, for me, that's the weakest part of it, either one. Both of them are right on the property line, we're so close, you know, it doesn't matter.
A good thing on the south is Chacon residence, and she has no problem with that, as long as the buffer is planted, she has no problem with that. No, no, that's, that's a fact.
Yeah, no, I, you know, that's, that's fine. Just one second. Dave, is it too soon to talk about the engineering at this point, or is it still so, there's so many balls in the air?
Yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, it's, look, it's not the Hoover Dam, I mean, it's the engineering stuff that they figured out. You know, it's all the planning pieces.
Right.
You know, it's all outland, it's good soils, so, you know, it's, the land planning piece needs to happen. I'd have you ran by two seventy-four.
What is this something here, that they, driveway couldn't just continue up and move that septic system?
One of the suggestions that they buy...
That was the original thing, the board suggested, there were two plans, south side, north side.
I think she's saying, not the south side plan that they showed, but actually have the traffic going a little under the garage, the garage.
Right, right.
Is that what she's saying?
Yeah, that's...
No, we're just saying, you get all of this, and just keep this, and go right up this way to that house.
Yeah, we've, we've went over that many times, we've shown all the safety hazards, and everything with that. There's many, many safety hazards, blind entrances, it goes a foot apart, kitchen stairs.
My objection on the south side is if you create two sections of a flexible subdivision by law, one section that says to minimize alteration of or damage to the natural and cultural features and topography of the land, the south side driveway does that, you're blowing a driveway through a wellhouse, and the standards reads, important, in reviewing the application for special permit for flexible development, the planning board shall consider the extent to which the application meets the proposed purposes of the flexible development by satisfying the following standards, there's a number of standards, including important natural and historic features, the land is determined by the planning board, shall be protected.
We, we would say, well, house, we'll just move it over a little bit, and we have a beautiful landscaping plan that would make it look even more attractive.
But moving it compromises the integrity of the building.
It's considered demolition. That does raise a question. There, the commission does get, get an oar in the water.
Yeah, and their current policy is, we can't propose anything on that until we know exactly where we want to, want to put it. In other words, at least as far as I understand from talking to John Field, we can't just start a plain old demolition delay after six months and say, "Now we'll move it where we want." We have to come in with a proposal, and see if the historic commission is okay with moving to that exact location.
Right, so there's a...
Yeah, but that, that...
I mean, that's a process.
Yeah, it is a process, but it just, I can't see that you would, would start that one first, because why would you start that if planning board says, "No, we don't want it there?"
Yeah, no, it's a chicken and egg issue.
I know Eric has given some thought to the feel of those three historic structures, if you move, move that pump house, from the historical aspect of the house, I actually would like this out to the front. Moving, I'll probably understand that that's a change, but if it's preserved, which done in a lot of historical situations ago.
It's not historic.
Well, it is...
It's not even remotely close to historic. It's ripping apart the fabric of the context of this site.
To move that pump house?
Yes.
Yes, because the pump house was located in the context of all the other houses.
Just identify yourself, please.
My name is Joseph Malone, and I'm the counsel for Barbara.
You had your hand up, actually.
Well, what I'm hearing is that this compliance plan is just a pretext to do whatever you feel like. That's what I'm hearing. If that land were vacant, would the board allow a dead-end street, which is expressly prohibited in the zoning bylaw? So, it sounds like you're just, to me, the petitioner has not met their burden on the compliance plan, and, and there's been nothing about traffic studies, location of that intersection from Hallenhill Road, the dangerous railroad bridge, where people slow down to go over a wooden bridge, and then speed up to come around that corner. So, there's, none of that's been addressed, and you have, you have elderly butters who've been dragged out for three hearings. It seems to me that the board should make a decision on the density plan, because it seems like you're just spinning your wheels on these driveways.
Well, the density plan depends on at least one waiver. It may depend on others, we're not sure.
But none of that's been brought out?
Oh, it has.
Where?
I talked in the last hearing session.
That's the...
Quite a bit of back and forth on that one.
Does the board think there's other waivers, signs, dead end?
I don't know if there are or not. I know, I know there's that one.
Yeah, that's the only waiver, everything else, actually, frontage area, everything else. And I gave Cat file to Dave to...
Yeah. The, a question came up as to whether the, the density plan created an interest onto Marion Street that violated the offset provision, but apparently not.
No.
So, it's, it's, what we're talking about is the dead-end provision. The planning board would have to grant a waiver on the dead-end provision, and again, I refer you to a decision on one of five concrete, because we granted a waiver on the, on the dead-end provision, but, but we, but there was a considerable amount of language involved in why we did that.
That way, you also granted a waiver on the offset.
That's right, and it's an equal... That's right, and it was an equal amount of language on why we did that. And we had, we felt that it was, it was actually in the community interest to grant those two, which are considered, not minor waivers. So we would have to, we, when we discussed this at the last meeting, we would have to think that there was a, a real public benefit in, in granting that waiver and permitting this to happen, because the density plan doesn't work if we don't grant that waiver.
Correct.
And, and so what I'm, what I'm personally wrestling with is the benefit of granting that waiver. What do we, what is the, what is the community benefit if we release that provision, that requirement? And, and right now, it's squishy as far as I'm concerned, the house may stay, or it may not stay, or it gets additions, or we don't, we don't know what's going to happen to it. And, you know, I'm thinking, again, personally, I'm just talking personally, but the, where the driveway is, we have an extra, you know, driveway and a house in the middle of a whole bunch of other houses, what does it look like? What is it, what are the impacts, how big is it versus no house?
Let's hope you have enough. This is the first, you, you mentioned, I know you mentioned last time, what is the benefit to granting the flexible? This is the first time you've said, what is the benefit to, you know, granting a waiver for the density?
No, that's not true. I, I did bring it up at the last meeting.
But, um.
You consistently misquote me, John.
All right, the, I disagree with the table speaker itself, but the.
Well, so what?
The, I guess the question I posed to this board, have you ever denied that way?
Um, we've, we have, we almost denied it on one of five Concord, well, we almost did.
That was my question.
And, and it doesn't matter.
I think it does, I'll hand, I'll hand this out with the Supreme Court case, rule.
Do you really want to take this to court?
Well, you're, you're saying, what's the benefit? And I'm saying, I'm not certain that this.
Do you want to take this to court?
No, I don't.
Because, believe me.
But I, I think it's, but I think it's important.
This is a threat.
But I think, no, it's not a threat, but don't you want to know what the law is in this area?
I, I, I would prefer to consult with town council rather than getting your legal advice on, on the precedents. But I think if we can't identify a public benefit from, from granting this waiver, then I think we're, I think we're, we're not doing a, a, a good service to the community that elected us.
I'm just saying, you'd be breaking, changing fifty years of conduct for these waivers, it's been a team.
I'm not sure that really has any bearing, I'm just thinking, we, we had such, I don't want to say that.
Not interested.
When we, the benefit on Concord Road was so clear to the most casual observer, that would be me, that when you drove into town, you did not see a whole series of roofs behind all of our buildings. So, I mean, there were huge public benefits to the landscape of the town remain the same. And I agree, I mean, there's got to, let's hear what the benefit is to the town putting in basically a landlocked house.
Just a question, what, what would have happened if you had not granted the way, the two waivers in that proposal?
You probably wouldn't have built anything out there.
That might, so how's there a benefit, say, well, if we grant that waiver, now you can build a couple more houses?
One more.
Yeah, but what's the benefit, whereas the alternative is, no, we'll house back.
Read the decision.
I will read the decision.
Yeah.
I think you're talking about a benefit. Sorry, my name's Todd Joseph, forty-seven, Partridge Hill. I never was very good with rules, my mom was, so let's kind of get me a follow, sorry. Nobody wants to hear that. I, I've sat through a few of these meetings and.
Which meetings?
Meetings about this property and this subdivision, just listen. What I've been wondering about is potential for a forty B in here. And, well, okay, I don't know, and I'm just.
Forty B and, you know.
I'm asking.
It's too small.
If that were to happen in this area.
HCD would just.
I'm just responding to you, you've asked multiple times, what's a possible benefit?
Well, that's not a possibility, I don't think that's.
Okay, so that's not even a possibility, all right.
They don't want to do that for certain, and they don't have any plans to do it, but I'm not certain why it's possible.
Selecting wouldn't go for it, it's too small, DHCD, hate small projects. I mean, it's just, the, the chances of that happening are slim, if that is mine.
Disagree.
It might take three years.
Nah, we have no intention of doing, don't want to do it.
That's another.
How is that a threat?
Well, because it's, it's.
Someone in the audience asked a question.
It's the usual chivalry. Oh, God, if we can't do this, we'll do a forty B, you know, and everybody's supposed to quicken their.
No, they haven't said that, but I was questioning your statement, they would never grant it, I just said.
I don't think so, I mean, I've had some experience actually designing and building forty B projects. So I, I know, I know the ropes down in Boston.
I've actually permitted it.
But this is a long, this would be a long, just a wash on some.
Well, that's good, because I think a forty B development in this neighborhood would be extremely detrimental.
There's one proposed just down the street, so.
I'm aware of that, that's, that's a driver for me coming here.
Yeah, and that's, I think that one is going to have a rocky road too, I, just my own personal opinion. Any other comments? Yes.
I have.
Your name?
Carolyn Ross, and we're at thirty-four Lantern Lane. We know the Myers and our kids play on their land, it is a beautiful, very large lot. I've seen the plans, I think they look great, I, my.
What looks great about them?
I think that they are keeping the privacy of everybody that's in that neighborhood on all of the outside lines. The house, their house, blocks any view of the building that's going to be in the background. Plus, they put those large arborettes, the house that will be there will also have a lot of privacy. And I think, I mean, it makes, when I look at everything, it makes sense to have the driveway on the south side, sharing. I mean, if you had the large, those two driveways, the margin, just make that one driveway, you go up and curve around, you're not, you're not actually damaging too much of the trees that are there, it's very buffer. The lines between their property and all the other neighbors, I assume that you've all been to the property, so you can see that there's a large, like, at least this much woods that are, divide all the properties. So it seems to me that what they're trying to do, seems like they're enhancing the neighborhood, enhancing Weston, getting another.
Enhancing by building another house?
Maybe you'll have another family that's living in Weston.
What about the buffer on the, on the left-hand side of the lot? That's about twenty feet, that, the house on the right, they, those two houses on the left, you really think there's enough screening there?
I do.
You do, right now, they, 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 they look out over into trees and grass. Now, would there be enough screen, ability to put an adequate screen in there, with like fifteen, twenty feet?
Right here, is this what you're talking?
No.
Further up?
No, further up, right there, right there, this about.
This is very dense.
Not right in that corner.
Here?
Right out the, keep running up the back, yeah, right in the.
This is all really dense woods, you can't see, when you're standing here, you can't see anything.
Point, Jay, point to where I'm, I'm referring to. Right there.
Pretty dense when I was there, it was pretty dense. And they can also put up another, if they wanted to make a.
A line of trees.
Smaller arborettes. But this is very, I mean, this is a pretty dense area here.
The intent is to, you know, as long as the drainage permits that to expand it.
Yeah, we have, as a designer now, you know, and these are just beginnings, we're talking about, we have ten to fifteen trees that we want to add through that area. And then, but that's just in that area, and then between that area and the house, the adjacent, you know, additional ones would be added based on what the house.
If we move the property line down, that move that, everything down the, down the mat, so that you get the, you know, all of that, the orange and blue stuff, and then you can really plant, you still get a side yard. I'm just saying, I, I, you know.
Yep, exactly.
Just like make a quick comment, my wife and I, I'm Joe Saffarata, I live on forty-two Willow Road, right down the road from the Myers. And we've been around for about eleven years, and we've watched them keep up their property, and they do a terrific job. And we walk around quite a bit, we run around quite a bit to the town, and we see other people that don't do as good of a job, and, and we're always looking at the future. And what they are proposing certainly has been done throughout the area, without a doubt. And I can see them making tasteful decisions to support the neighborhood, because they love it here, and they.
They intend to sell the front house?
No.
No, 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 no. And the family talk about being good to the community and, and being involved. I know that Mr. Myers, Dr. Myers would give the shirt off his back, but I certainly wouldn't take that, because he doesn't have very good taste in clothing. So, anyway, I just want to express my full support, certainly with what Ms. Ross had mentioned earlier, as far as the buffers. Been back there plenty of times, and, and it certainly would be, again, a tasteful addition, would not be an eyesore. And I just think that, you know, enhancing the neighborhood with people who are active and who care is more important than anything else that I've heard about exactly where driveways are, and certainly I've heard, I think, a two-way highway, I mean, I'm more a fan on the left side, because I think that the folks there need some kind of relief, if you will. Because if you've seen it, they've got no room, I'd much rather see it there on that side, but that's a whole other issue, but anyway.
Okay, thanks, well, any, any other comments? Yes.
Sure. Bahid Atif, one eighty-five Country Drive. We have also been good friends, and our kids go there quite often playing. And they've been very good steward of the historical property, they've checked it out very nicely, and I don't believe they ever want to sell it and, you know, destroy the historical aspect of it. And they have, they have had a lot, there's a lot of space back there, and, you know, I would be really sure that they'll keep a good taste in what we developed. There's plenty of privacy back there, I've been there, there's plenty of.
Okay.
Since I get.
One more cheerlead?
David Goldson, I live on thirty-four Lantern Lane, known Myers for, why, we've lived in Weston for about eleven years, and I have to say, one of the first things you do when you're at the Weston is you buy a chainsaw, because there's trees falling down constantly. In fact, I had to help Hal clean up a massive limb that fell off that ashtray onto his yard just on July third, when we had that big super slump come by. So, but I know enough about trees to know that that ash is, it's on its way out. So, I mean, if there's any debate on whether that tree's going to live forever, there shouldn't be a debate, it's dying, it's pretty clear. And it's going to keep dropping, I was like, I hope that that wouldn't be an interference for Hal. I don't like cutting trees down, but, you know, certainly burn the wood when it does. But I, I echo the thoughts of Bahid and Joe, that they, they're very reasonable, I think they're trying to do the right thing. Obviously, they, they do want to see the subdivision happen in the process, respect the, the law and make sure that they make neighbors happy. But I, I hope that this process is able to move forward on, on their behalf, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Now, can I say one last thing?
Yeah.
Again, it's an email, you may not have had a chance to read it, I was responding to some of Betsy's comments this afternoon. They said they are willing to explore a preservation restriction across the front elevation.
What does that mean, the front elevation?
Well, in other words, you can add it to the side or the back somewhere along the way, but it means, you know, what's it mean to me? It means the front elevation, preserve.
Preservation restrictions do not preclude additions. But there's a classic example on Route one seventeen.
Yeah, so on a day, on a day house.
I don't know, is that?
Corner of church and.
Whitney Tavern.
Whitney Tavern. Oh, Whitney Tavern, okay.
Yeah.
Also eighty-eight in north.
But I don't think you can get a preservation restriction on a facade, and that's to be the mayor's house. But again, it doesn't preclude an addition. That would be part of the preservation restriction, would stipulate where the addition could be.
Right.
It's done all the time.
No, I have read some of them.
There was a preservation restriction on Carol Cino's project on Route twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is just one last point I'd like to make on the, the dead-end road thing, kind of thing, or should, do you want me to say that?
Sure, what?
On the dead-end roads. Because I guess there is, you know, the variance, the only variance is on the dead-end roads. And it ends up that the roads in the last thirty years, all but one of them have been dead-end roads, or dead-end spurs. I also have a, a graph, it took me a ton of time, but if you go and look at all of the streets in Weston, there's a hundred exactly through streets, there's a hundred and twelve dead ends, and ones that have dead-end spurs or cul-de-sacs off of them, or go into driveways that lead and back, that's forty-nine, so well over half of the homes in Weston do have the drive, the dead end. And I have a list of all the roads, so you could check out my numbers and everything. And it is pretty interesting, because I know, you know, you don't want to get too much into the legal of it, but there is a case, I'm going to use at the Supreme Court, that says that we have equal protection under the law, we count two. And you asked, like, what is it that we, the town of Weston gets by giving us? And I think what the town of Weston gets is that when all of you take office, you're supposed to follow the law, and it's supposed to be for everyone, and it's not supposed to be arbitrary and indiscriminate. And if thirty out of thirty-one roads that went in were dead ends, to come to us and say, oh, no, we can't give you yours, because it's a dead end. The Supreme Court is pretty clear that that's not allowed, and they say in case after case, a viable equal protection claim can be stated in a land use context. Other federal courts have lately agreed an equal protection claim may be established based on selective enforcement or a single-ing out. So you can't single somebody out and say, the other thirty people can get this, but not you. And two-thirds of the homes in Weston are on a dead-end street or have a dead-end way. Barbara Malone is at the end of a dead end. Her son-in-law is at the end of a dead end, many, many people in, in Weston are. And, you know, it has to be fair for everyone, we get the same treatment, you know?
I, I, I understand, Dave, one, one question?
Yeah, this is, this is more of a question, and I'd, I'd like to have an answer for, for maybe this one and for future ones. So when the flexible development, my understanding was when the flexible development subdivision by law came in, there, you know, had, first you, basically, in a nutshell, you couldn't have more lots than would normally be allowed. And by, two, no stretch of the imagination was it a by right, like, you could deny a flexible and not give a reason?
That's right.
And, and so, you know, the density determination one, variance, not a variance, you know, waiver, not a waiver, given it a hundred times, haven't given it at all. And, and again, I think, you know, you may want to ask town council for backup on this, or someone else's opinion, but this is my understanding of it, so that we don't get sidetracked into, into, like, a dead-end waiver issue. Is that, you know, am I wrong in saying the board could approve the density development plan? Say, yeah, you could put two lots here, but then deny the flexible, how do you even give them a reason?
The thing is, you're asking us for a special permit, you don't have a right to the special permit. So when you talk about treating you equally under the law, Dave's right, we could say, we could deny the special permit. That you, your fallback position is you have, you can then build on two really thin lots with sideways houses, and that would be atrocious, and so forth and so on. But that's the, that's the lever, the lever is, you have a density determination plan that's, that's really awful. And so, and so you, what you're saying is, you give us the special permit, because otherwise we'll do something really awful.
But it's awful, but those.
Does it say that? Does, does it say, does it say that you don't have to have, I've never read the special permit law or bylaw on special permit, including flexible, that you can deny it for no reason, that you have to show why it didn't satisfy the standard?
And we have their standards, and you can challenge, we can deny it under, because it doesn't conform with the standards. And you can challenge that.
I agree with that.
And you can, you can go to Land Corps.
No, I thought David was saying you can just arbitrarily deny it. I think you have to say that they can't satisfy the.
And I'm not a lawyer, I don't really care. What I'm trying to refocus people on is make this a better plan. Okay, this, this effort of counting things and, you've heard a lot about deficiencies in the current plan. Let's put some effort into making the plan less deficient and meeting the guidelines and things like that. And frankly.
Well, I don't know why you're applauding, that's all we've been saying.
I know, I know, but I just, I think that it was kind of, you know, on this. When, it's a benefit to Weston not to have that skinny little lots either, with the little houses, you know, right up next to Barbara Malone, and right up next to Broadnecks. So it is like we're trying to move away, all of us together, and I hope, you know, that we get your advice and follow that.
The board wants some more changes.
And David has great ideas always, too. I'm trying to make it better.
Can we have any input on north versus south? And we will work on one or the other to make it work.
I don't see, my own personal, I don't see either driveway, it's not, neither one of them is working for me right now. There may be a third alternative that works better. But both of them are right up on the property line, and there's, and they give us very little, little work with in terms of buffer.
How about coming from Hal, I've dealt, it's been raised several times myself.
Or rail?
I don't know, I, I mean, that's off-site.
So you would like more buffer?
There's gradation issues, excavation issues.
Well, I'm just throwing it out as another option for hitting goose eggs here.
You don't have access on Helen, you know, I just don't.
I can get an easement on the Albertine.
They want this land, we want this land, it's a possibility. Do a swap. This is not a scenic route.
Yeah, but that's.
That's possible.
Possible, I guess.
But bottom line is, we don't, you're saying those driveways don't, especially the ones in the north.
There's no real preference, north or south, first of all, it's really about the buffer between where it's proposed and the property.
That's right. That's exactly correct.
And how it meanders on the site and how it gets to a lot to.
But does it, would it make, how it meanders, and would it make a difference if they had like a letter saying that they're good with it, as long as we're okay with the other? Because, you know, the, the way that you all keep saying, play with the property lines, and you've been saying, play outside of the box. But it's, the neighbors would like us to do something there. The way that the lot line was cut did not benefit either of us. It was cut way too close to them in the front, and way too, and they don't care about the back, that's way slant for them. So they would like to be able to turn around in that driveway, they'd like to have another space for a car there, they would really like to have that. So this isn't something that we're saying, we're shoving down their throat. They've told me again and again and again, there's certain circumstances under which they would really prefer this. And I know it's a little bit unusual, but if you all backed it too, that could make it work.
I think what we're saying is that we don't, you can do whatever you want with that property line and give, give your neighbor to the left more space. We don't really see how that's going to affect where your driveway goes. If you just imagine that property line gone, it's still not clear where, where you want to put, or the best place to put that, that driveway. So I, I don't really see how that property line moving it helps your situation.
Because of the existing vegetation, is there, preserve that as much as you can, and then enhance it with.
Wouldn't you preserve it anyway?
Well, I guess on the north side.
Yeah, that would just, we're thinking we put up a lot over there, like, if we had that land in back, then we could do a lot of buffer over there on that side.
Hearing buffer, does the board share Betsy's concern about moving the pump house?
Can I just request the chairman?
I'm asking the entire board.
Just from my point of view.
That driveway then would be alongside Connie Carter's.
Now, where to speak?
Right there.
I just want to just give, and this is strictly my opinion alone, this isn't anybody else's, I'm bored. When I drive down Marion Road, Marion Street, I actually, I'm not sure if this is anybody else's opinion, but I actually liked the circular driveway around that house. And I think it could be very much not made into a giant buffer, so we can't see the house, because you've done a beautiful job on the house. To look at the house, and wish the house to stay there for another two-hundred-and-fifty years, but at that moment. And it would be real nice to have that. And I, I lean towards the south driveway. Just be, I'm, I'm sure the neighbors would love to have more land, and you guys can work that out for yourselves, however you want to do that. But to me, I think you can probably do something with the south driveway, but you cannot move that pump house. Because I, I think.
Fine with that, too.
Betsy's absolutely right. So, but, and what seems to be the problem is you have this giant parking area.
Yeah.
Oh, it could shrink.
That's right.
I mean, there's got to be a way that you could, but that's just me, remember, I am speaking just for myself. Just, hello. Whistling breeze.
Where's the tree line on the top of the site, right there? Yeah, it's on, it's on. What if, what if you moved that dividing property line down to just about where the barn is? So you slide it down, and then slide the whole McGillan, yeah, count that way, so that you're, you're not cutting all those trees. I mean, you know, everybody's saying, oh, there's a very dense, there's a real dense green between the neighboring houses. But if you look at the red line, a lot of them are, are going. And plus, the, it's, the house is still in the contours. So if you, the closer, the further down you can pull it, so that the flatter the site is, and the fewer trees you have to get rid of, the better, in my opinion.
Also, that very squareness of the limited disturbance makes me, it makes it, it's all just sort of rectilinear background, a little rectilinear house.
Just a square.
It's just a square, and it doesn't seem very graceful, I think, probably. And maybe you can save a lot of the trees.
More contour.
Well, I might be saying contour, I mean, there's a lot.
We're having a good tragedy. Yeah, where are?
Where are, I think you're probably within that white zone, it's all being completely wiped out, you probably have a lot of trees, you could just stay and have water.
Right, exactly.
You know what I mean? Like, normal houses sometimes have.
Tree essential line, what is that?
You got a clear cut that you can move that area.
Well, what happens is that, is that we're, we're trying to establish the limited disturbance for the subdivision flexible. You have to do a site plan approval, and then there's going to be individual trees inside that, it won't work there, and it gets saved anyway. And so, what, what we're doing is, and as, as Al mentioned, if we pull this forward, you know, some of those disturbances or limited disturbances can get pulled forward as well. Because what we're doing, we're trying to establish an area to place the house. So we're placing it here, so then, say, the limited grading ends here, so then all of a sudden, all these trees get saved.
What if we just, what if we just locate the house?
Yeah.
In the decision. It has to be here, not sort of somewhere in this box, but the house, the footprint has to be here. I mean, we could do that.
Right.
We've done, we, that's what we did at one of five Carter.
Yeah, we had a, we did do the box, but I, but yeah, and lot two was much stricter.
Now, the house was. So the box is essentially the house footprint, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, essentially, that's what we did at one of five Carter for lot two, because it was a critical, it was critical from the viewscape perspective.
And, and. Red line, patios.
Limited disturbance.
Patios.
This one. Yeah.
Yeah, take a look.
This is limited, they did the site.
Show me which is a limited disturbance. Okay, now, what is that red line below that?
This is the tree line.
That's the tree line. Why couldn't that be the limited disturbance?
If the house went forward.
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty suggestive, move the line down, drop the house into that area.
But then that gives us like no backyard.
Well, well, you know, we have some play here, probably, we have some play here, we can play with that.
And you also have the house that you can play with. I mean, that can be artfully arranged to follow the terrain a little bit, respectfully. Within.
And there's also things that we, we were talking about, if we, even if we, so we split this difference, there is the ability, because the set can't go on, on lot A, because it has to be on the lot per title file, but the recharge basins can, they can go in lot A as easements. So it makes, the property line could shift further back up here to get the yard back, but you could put it on the ground, you know, this is the recharge base. So you get that along anyway.
And, and if you kept the driveway on the south side, couldn't it? Could you do something like go around, sorry, go around, like, the south side of the barn?
There's got to be ways to.
Yeah, I mean.
It doesn't have to be as close to the house now, I understand why you don't want that traffic right near the house. But it could be here, and then, and then avoid the.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, this is good. So we're talking about some real good site guidelines on the site, and that's on the housing. We're talking about shifting the property line down and relocating the house further into the flat, no-treet area. We're talking about taking a look at, instead of just, you know, sort of geometric driveway design, snaking around and avoiding some of the, the pump house and that sort of thing. We're talking about increasing the buffers as much as we possibly can. And we're talking about at least considering a reasonable preservation restriction on the, on the existing.
That would make the.
I think, I think that would, I think that the planning board.
Yeah, there was one other issue, but Kim's suggestion, since the mature trees are coming down, something from the streets, the streetscape.
Right. Some planning on the, on the street, right. I mean, that, those, those kinds of movements would, would help us a lot, frankly.
Well, this is all very good feedback. Kim.
Good ideas.
Just last question, what issues? What about, just thinking that people seem to like for you, is it here, what do you think about here versus putting up there?
I'm not, again, I'm not talking about the buffer, like.
I know I wasn't fully grasping what you were saying.
You're taking down two pretty substantial trees, it would be nice to put one in that would, in time, replace that.
Put a nice specimen tree.
So a nice street tree.
Exactly.
Were you talking about a buffer well, or just get a nice, fairly, a buffer, a specimen tree with a good head start?
Exactly, and then, you know, keep the buffer in back.
What kind, which kind of.
There's lists on the website, you know.
Okay.
They want to cut down that big detail.
Yeah, that one's not in shape.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, take a look at one of the, at the, at the design guidelines for one and five. These would be considerably shorter, but because there's less site work to consider, but gives you, gives you an idea.
Take a look at the house.
Yeah, the houses, the language concerning the, the architecture was more general, and we didn't require an actual design. But we did specify the envelope, and we specified some design guidelines, so.
Like the massing, the height of the eaves, but I didn't really get into style.
Yeah, we didn't, but, but we did, but we did some of that style.
You mean in the context of the neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah. Neighborhood context, absolutely.
Betsy, one thing I'll do, if it makes sense, I, I think it's, if I can, I'll send you what I hear for areas to work on. That'll be helpful, because if I miss something, would you be willing to take a look, say, no, my notes say that.
And first of all, I, you got to get to the fire department on this driveway. It's a twelve-foot driveway for one, for one house. You know, it just drives me nuts.
It's around fourteen.
And, and there's no sit, there's no telling, they could require that, that's the thing.
Oh, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Very useful, thank you so much.
Continue to August twentieth.
August, we continue to August twentieth. Boy, for your, August twentieth.
You should announce this, so then everybody.
We're continuing August twentieth at ten o'clock.
This next one?
Yeah.